Meaning, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by the Commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the new plan of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Callahan, Commissioner Markowitz.
Present.
Commissioner Leece.
Present.
Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner Alvarado.
Present.
Commissioner De Pasquale, Chairman Morelli.
Present.
Commissioners Callahan and De Pasquale are absent. Let the record indicate the presence of Deputy Corporation Counsel Joseph Lupo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have several announcements which I'm going to make before we get started. Case number 3468, which is 108 Cleveland Avenue, that case is not going to be voted on this evening. The following cases also have been adjourned until further notice. 3475 is the case of 211 Edwards Boulevard, 3276 is 61 Neptune Boulevard, and 3473 is 231 East Chester Street. If anyone's here for those meetings, they're not being heard tonight.
Case number 3470, application of Viana Infante of 106 California Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.5B height, 9-105.5D side yard, 9-105.5 building area for a new three-story house with roof deck at 104 California Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 243, lot 2, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Who will introduce a motion on this application?
I'll introduce a motion to deny.
Commissioner Leece has introduced a motion to deny the application. Who will second?
Second.
Commissioner Markowitz has seconded the motion. Commissioner Markowitz?
Deny.
Commissioner Leece?
Deny.
Commissioner Brooks?
Deny.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Denied.
Chairman Morelli?
Denied.
This application has been denied. Case number 3472, application of James Lynch of 17 Wyoming Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for an application for an interpretation of the code pursuant to section 9-106.61 of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York, for the property located at 15 Wyoming Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 267, lot 322, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Who will introduce a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Commissioner Alvarado has introduced a motion to deny the application. Who will second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Brooks has seconded the motion. Commissioner Markowitz?
Recuse.
Commissioner Leece?
Deny.
Commissioner Brooks?
Deny.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Denied.
Chairman Morelli?
Denied.
The application for an interpretation of the code has been denied.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lynch, just for the sake of clarity and for the board, in denying this application, it is denying the challenge and upholding the Building Commissioner Scott Kemen's determination and interpretation of the code.
Case number 3463, application of Isaac Lapetus of 115 Ocean Avenue, Lawrence, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-113.2G off-street parking in order to maintain off-street parking in the front yard at 155 West Market Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 68, lot 50, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, Ms. Rob.
I have some photos I want to hand out before you start. On your behalf, on behalf of the applicant Isaac Lapetus, who is currently the owner of this subject property, we have a sequel we would believe to be a reasonable variance. We're looking to have an additional off-street parking space in the front of the house, on the front parking bed. Just to give you a little history, because I understand what some of the concerns of the board are going to be on this. Mr. Lapetus lived in this property during COVID. It's a two-family house. He had young children during COVID. He decided to, it was a long driveway leading to a non, not a parking garage, it was just a long driveway, a two-family house. He decided to put a fence up and make a side yard for his children so they could play and watch them, especially during that time. He has since moved his two-family house, and what he did was he paved in a little bit further to the west so that a second car can park, you know, in the driveway there. Like I said, currently it's a two-family home, so a one tandem driveway would be useless. You'd have one resident on the driveway, one on the street. This definitely benefits the neighborhood, as in now each tenant can get a spot. If you look at the photos, he did it, I'll use my quote aesthetically, he really did a good job. It's nice to get cobblestones and papers. He did not take up the entire front yard, he only took up, you can go up to where the house starts. You see the second photo there, the rest of the front yard is still maintained in its current condition. All he did was go to the west to fit a second car so that he can park the second car there for the second tenant in the future. But at that time, like I said, he enclosed the yard so those kids could play and keep view of them. If you look at the photos I presented, there is no parking in the garage currently. It's definitely a benefit to the neighborhood because if he was forced to restore it, he only allowed one tenant to park there, he got the tenant to park. It would be impossible to put a second tenant, give a second tenant parking. So there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood, it really doesn't affect anybody. He did it professionally, it looks nice. He reconcreted, he redid the sidewalk, he redid the curb cut, he used the paver stones there, so it does look nice. It can't be achieved by any other method. Like I said, the only way that you're going to put two spots for tenants and make any change to that is to do it the way he did it, let them park side by side. We don't believe the variance is substantial. Again, we're taking two cars off the street, a two-family house, and it's definitely not going to have an adverse effect environmentally or physical impact to the neighborhood. I believe it's a simple application. Like I said, I know we're going to have to get around the fact that he did it. I'm sure the council is going to raise that. That's okay, we're in court currently. But I believe in a case like this, I believe we have to look at the application on its face. Court is there to deal with what we did without evidence, obviously, so.
Just for the sake of the record, you know, as everyone here is aware, you know, I do not have a vote in this matter, but just to make the record clear, this applicant did go to the Building Department and seek their guidance, and he was told how to properly do this, and I believe the amendment to the building permit was actually filled out by our zoning inspector, Richard Chu. And in doing all that, it was then ignored, and in essence, the homeowner did whatever he wanted to do, which, you know, Mr. Apple may have a point as far as, you know, it might not be, you know, a major detriment to the neighborhood, right? But isn't it a detriment to the neighborhood if we have zoning code and we have inspectors and, you know, your tax dollars, all your tax dollars pay, you know, our enforcement agencies for people, in essence, because people ignore what they're told and just do whatever they do or whatever they want to do, in contradiction of our zoning code and our local laws and codes. So even though, you know, on its face, it might not seem that it's such an egregious variance, I believe the surrounding conduct actually is much, goes a little bit deeper than, than just the fact that he paved this over, because it wasn't like it was done, you know, out of ignorance. It was done knowing full well that, that this was going to be an issue, and in essence, scoffed at, you know, the Building Department and our enforcement bodies.
Counsel, I understand that's why I brought it up the way I brought it up. I didn't say it was an accident. I said it was during COVID, which it was. He lived there at the time, he had little kids, which is why he did it. You know, obviously, it was a strange time for everybody, I'm not justifying it. What I'm asking is that, you know, we allow the courts to find him appropriately and handle him accordingly. We've been in court downstairs with this, we still are. And what I'm asking the board, and yourself, Counsel, like you said, is just to look at this application on its face and say, hey, if we came and did this the right way, would it be approved or not? Is it a good application? Is it not? That's what I'm asking. I can't get around what happened. I, you know, and that's why we're here, the way we're, you know, presenting it, the way we're presenting it.
Mr. Apple, just for the sake of clarity, I'm just preserving my record. I do not know how the board's going to vote.
I understand.
But I'm just doing my job.
No, I understand, and I fully expected it, and I didn't plan on presenting this case any other way.
Yes.
Other than to ask you to look at this application on its face and say, hey, guys, if I was the next door neighbor, I wanted to restore this and have one of the tenants have to park on the street, which I like this, and we're going to approve this as if he came the right way. Now, if you do approve it, there's still going to be consequences, so they have to go back down to City Court, and I can't get past the fact that there's a violation and I'm going to have to end up paying whatever I have to pay for that enforcement or the taxpayers, and pay them back what the judge sees fit. I don't think granting this variance is going to impact the decision in court much differently because, again, we did what we did, we're not denying that. So that's, I'm asking that you consider this application on its face and say, well, would this be if it came to be approved?
But the question is, Ms. Rob, if we, if we, let's say, grant the application, doesn't that make the court case on this aspect of it moot?
No, I don't think it does, because it doesn't take away from the fact that they still committed a violation. I mean, that certainly fines up to the judge, but I don't think it takes away from the fact that they committed a violation.
Now, did they, did they? Did they adjourn it pending our decision, or do you guys have a court date?
We have, we adjourned it to come to the zoning board to see what the outcome would be.
Okay.
But, but I don't know that it's going to impact any kind of fine. Like I said, a positive decision or a negative decision making us restore it is going to cease any fines in the future, but it's not going to take away from the violation that we had committed and did down in court.
Now, is that the only, is that the only violation that he's in court for in this?
Yes.
Okay.
With that, the only thing that I would remind the board is that even though this matter is pending in court and, you know, it was adjourned pending the outcome of this, based on Mr. Apple's, you know, representations, that the variances aren't going to affect the court case either way. If this is something that you all wanted to deliberate on and not vote on tonight, and also see what the outcome of the court is, let that resolve itself and then vote in the future, that is also an option that you all have as well.
Understood.
Counsel, can I ask a question, because you're the prosecutor, your office is a prosecutor in court. Are they going to allow me to resolve that without this? If the answer is yes, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, and I'll tell you why. Because they're not stacking the charges on this matter, right?
Right.
So they're not violating you every day. So once the situation in court is resolved, I will make, if I have to personally go down, I'll make a representation to the court that the zoning board was just waiting to see what the court was going to do, let that situation resolve itself, and then it was going to make its determination. In the event that the determination is that the variance is granted, nothing has to be done further. The court case will be resolved, and this will be resolved. If, in fact, they deny it, then at that point, you know, we'll be working with the Building Department to restore it. But to your point, you know, you said that this variance doesn't, isn't going to affect the, the fine of the violation either way. So if we put the court case first before the zoning determination, it shouldn't matter then.
I'm happy to do that, but like I said, from experience, from City Court, usually they want to have a final inspection before they resolve any kind of, if, if they can, if they can tell me what my ultimate fine is going to be, and if I'm denied this, you know, or approved this, and I'm done there, then I'm happy to do it that way. That's fine with me.
Forgive me, Mr. Apple, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's just the fact that, you know, whether the variance is granted, now you're saying, I mean, I'm just a little confused, because you said if the court can tell you what the final fine is going to be based on the variance, but prior you said that the variance isn't going to affect the violation and the fine. So do they correlate or don't they?
They, they should not correlate, it's up to the judgment. Normally in City Court, they want, before they resolve one of these violations, these zoning cases, they want the situation corrected. In other words, restored, so.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I would have disagreed with that. What I personally, in my experience, do disagree with is the fact that the variance doesn't affect the, the fine, because in my experience, as a full prosecutor in our City Court, if the variance is granted, then the court is usually much more lenient with respect to the violation, because they view it as, all right, well, they got the variance anyway, now it's legal, so, you know what, if there's any, if there's any fine, it's nominal. But here, I think that, you know, what separates this is the fact that the applicant knew that he was violating when he did, and notwithstanding those, notwithstanding that he knew it was going to be a violation, and again, going back to, you know, creating work and costing our taxpayers more money to enforce our code, it really wasn't much of a concern, it wasn't much of a concern then what the outcome was going to be or if he was going to be violated. So why don't we just let the violation play through, and then if I need to make a representation to the court, I'm on the record now saying that I will personally put it down to the court and let them know that the zoning board is moving it open pending the court's outcome.
I think, I think what needs to happen is when we go to court on the next appearance, your office needs to come down and say, you prepared a lawsuit case out, for, you know, and then you can reopen it if we don't comply down the road, but.
Well, I could make a representation to you right now that you could hold me to, that if the case, that if we're ready to close the case out, and there's nothing, you know, and that we will close it out, and we will give period of time for the zoning board to render its determination. If the zoning board then denies the variance, then we will still work with the applicant and give him time and not violate him again. You know, this isn't a, this isn't like, you know, a way to backdoor to just be like, oh, all right, well, we're going to close out the case just so we could rat you again and get more money out of you. That, you know, that doesn't help our residents.
I guess, just from experience in court, they want to hear from the prosecutor that the city's ready to close the case out, and then they'll, you know, they'll, they'll close it out. If you're going to make that representation, we're happy to do that first, that's fine.
I'm going to make that representation.
We'll do that.
Can I just ask a question about this case, though?
Sure.
So can I just understand, what was originally approved?
There was nothing, there was nothing approved. It was originally a thinner driveway that led all the way to the backyard.
Didn't I hear that the Building Department helped them with an application to do something the right way?
It was within code, so it was, so the initial application and the building, that was, that was, I guess, granted, I'll give it.
It was approved?
It was approved.
By the Building Department to do something, I just.
There was no denial.
Right, can I, can I see what that was? Can we just see what the, how different what he did was from what was approved?
I, I don't have it approved.
Can someone describe what was approved? Can you?
I don't have it approved.
So based on that rendering, now, that's not a two-spec drawing as far as the coloring is concerned. If, where it's highlighted in yellow, if that was to continue down to the street, that was all approved. Everything that was in blue, that's where the pavers were put across the whole front of the property, that was what was done without.
So, so the idea of the green is that you're supposed to park back there, right?
Yes, not.
Not in the front of the street?
It was one long driveway for a two-family house, which is, which is why I said if we're forced to put it back the way it was, only one of the two tenants can park there, you can't stand to park that.
Fortunately, we have plenty of applicants who come before this board who actually argue the opposite, on two-family homes, that they can park in the street. So it's, it's hard to gauge which was more important when, when we have people sitting here arguing both.
I mean, I would think the more off-street parking you have of that, the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, not if we do it illegally.
I understand, that's why we're here.
Do any members of the board have any questions? Any other members of the board? Would anyone in the audience like to speak in favor or against? Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, and I, I think the board may be so inclined to hold a decision, unless anybody wants to make a motion, but I.
I'm happy to make a motion to deny.
Are you putting that motion on the floor?
I am.
Okay, does anybody want to second that motion, then?
I'll second.
Case number 3463, application of Isaac Lapetus of 115 Ocean Avenue, Lawrence, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-113.2G off-street parking in order to maintain off-street parking in the front yard at 155 West Market Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 68, lot 50, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Commissioner Alvarado has introduced a motion to grant, uh, to, I'm sorry, deny the application. Commissioner Leece has seconded the motion. Commissioner Markowitz?
Deny.
Commissioner Leece?
Deny.
Commissioner Brooks?
Deny.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Denied.
Chairman Morelli?
Denied.
This application has been denied. Case number 3436, application of James Warren of 608 West Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.2C front yard, 9-105.2D side yard, 9-113.2G off-street parking for a modification to variance number 3436 with respect to side yard and off-street parking at 608 West Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 12, lot 133, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, can you name an address, please?
Good evening, Rebecca Weavers, 143 East Park Ave, Long Beach, New York. I'm here representing James and Crystal Warren. The owners were here for a variance for the front yard and side yard. Those two items were previously approved under case 3436. We have then, since the variance hearing for that, we shifted the proposed addition towards the front of the house to align with the existing line of the front dwelling at 20.1 feet back. We are existing approved for 18.1 feet. Likewise with the side yard, we were approved for 1.3 feet and then decided to shift it to 2 feet so that we did not have to do the fire rating.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, so you didn't have to fire rate.
The fire rating?
I just didn't hear you. Thank you.
And then the last thing that we're requesting is the off-street parking. We do have the allowable space for a, that meets requirements for an off-street parking space. It's 20 and at least nine feet wide, and there's an existing curb cut there already.
Is it because, so based on this variance that you're seeking now, is it because the parking is in the front of the house?
Um, yeah, so.
Is that what the issue is?
I'm sorry?
Is that what the issue is?
Yeah, so the parking is in the front of the house, that was the additional thing that then came into play once we shifted the addition forward towards the front of the dwelling.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I, because I vaguely remember this case, the extension initially was going to be in the back of the house?
Um, there was going to be an extension in the back and alongside.
Okay.
But after going through some estimates and just pricing and everything, it seems like this is in the best interest of the clients to just do the side addition.
Okay. And again, just for historical purposes, when the addition was also going to be in the rear, the rear of the house, were the applicants seeking a rear yard setback?
No.
No? Okay, I just didn't know if that was something that they did require but no longer require. Thank you.
Just a quick question, the, the addition to the side that you're making, that juts out, which you've now moved in by about a foot, right?
Yeah.
Is that, what is that, storage?
Um, yeah, it's going to be storage. It was initially going to be garage is what we were hoping for, which is why we had that to 1.3, to allow for that nine feet needed for the clearance. But then after doing the revision, we decided to make it an addition, and it does not need to be the nine feet in order to be the addition, and to just keep that from needing the fire rating, we put it at 2 feet.
And you are putting roll-up doors on both ends? Is that what I see on the plan, or?
We're, we're adjusting that aspect of it after we had done, you know, the design changes. So we might do one smaller roll-up door, but not on both ends. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a question. So basically now, at this point, the yard has been brought in by about a foot, let's say a little less than a foot. So the question becomes, is anything changing, that's on the west side yard, is anything changing on the, any other dimension on the east side?
On the east side, you said?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so then, that section of the code obviously still needs a variance, but it actually is an alleviation of the original variance request, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the space that's in the front yard where the existing curb cut that you're proposing to provide, what is the dimension of that parking space?
Um, it is 20 by 10.
Okay.
10.8.
So there's no variance requested for the size itself?
No, sir.
And when was the curb cut installed? Is that something that was pre-existing?
Yes.
Okay. Was any other curb cut installed or widened or anything else?
No.
Okay. Just for the record, I'm asking that, and the, the existing is going to remain at 18.1. That was not something that was changed at all in the original hearing, right?
No, that's from the original hearing. We requested the 18.1.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions at this time, any members of the board?
Just one last one, are you going to maintain that white picket fence in the front?
Yes.
After you do the addition?
Um, where we can maintain it, yeah.
Because it looks like it's going to be flush against the front of the house, right?
Yeah, so we'd probably just have a small little L shape there.
Just one, thank you.
No problem.
Does anyone else have any questions? Would anyone in the audience like to be heard either for or against? Would anyone like to make a motion on the case?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, grant.
Grant, sorry.
Case number 3436, application of James Warren of 608 West Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.2C front yard, 9-105.2D side yard, 9-113.2G off-street parking for a modification to variance number 3436 with respect to the side yard and off-street parking at 608 West Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 12, lot 133, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Commissioner Alvarado has introduced a motion to grant the application. Chairman Morelli has seconded the motion. Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant.
This application has been granted.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, too, the announcement that counsel just reminded me of is that the following two cases, 347, 3477 and 3478, although we will be hearing these cases, we can't vote on them tonight because we're still voting, we're still waiting a vote from the Nassau County Planning Board and a commission, that we can't, we don't vote unless we have heard from them that they either don't have a say on the case or that they do vote on the case. So we're not allowed to vote on it this evening. Okay, with that in mind.
Case number 3477, application of Jose Franco of 160 East Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.2C front yard in order to construct two new front yard decks at 160 East Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 109, lot 62, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Carl Verastegui, 229 East Fulton Street. Verastegui. Eli Victor, E-R-A-S-T-E-G-U-Y.
Okay, I'm Mr. Verastegui, go ahead.
Originally, the owner had applied with an architect last year in January, that architect had filed, however, the owner doesn't speak English very well, so they had to apply for a singular deck, but the owner had thought he was going for two decks, one on each floor. So he had come here to the variance board last year and was approved on January 17th for the, for the deck, with the front yard being seven feet and three-fourth of an inch. I know with him back in March, when we went to go over the estimate, and he realized he only applied for one deck, not two decks, so that's when we came up with these new plans, new architect, Michael Angellone, afterward he applied, and now.
Okay, so looking, looking at the photograph of the front of the house, which you have labeled as picture one, let's say, what, let's just say the decks are approved, so you, are you planning on cutting out the front of the house next to the windows and putting in like a sliding door or some sort of access?
Yes.
In that location, okay, to the deck. Okay, to the deck. So now, the first floor deck, are you planning to where the staircase is going up to then kind of opening that up in that area to where you would access the first floor deck?
Yes.
Okay. So the first floor deck is not going to need any kind of widening of the door or anything of that sort?
All from the deck.
Just going to be access? Okay. And for the record, how far onto the property line or towards the property line will those decks be extending? What's the dimension of the deck?
The deck is seven feet.
Seven feet from the front of the structure?
Yes.
Okay. How much setback does that leave us now?
That leaves us, and then there is a staircase absolute, so that leaves us with eight feet three inches from the staircase. Originally, when he came, the architect came for last year's variance, he didn't take into consideration the staircase, so he was approved for seven feet and nine inches here. Seven feet and eight inches.
Okay. And so, the deck on the first floor, is the deck on the first floor going to just be in that side yard area where the grass is? Or is that front deck now going to require a demolition of the entire staircase and the deck just coming straight out?
Yes, it's going to require demolition and then the staircase coming out.
Okay. So I just want to see on the plan where the staircase is going to end. Because basically, so what's going to happen is then the deck is going to protrude from the house, so you'll have the two windows in the front. Front door remains as is. Then there's about a seven-foot protrusion from the front of the house on the first floor from the front door. Now then, how do you access stairs to get up onto that deck?
On the first floor?
Yeah.
Have a staircase, a new staircase installed in front of the deck. There'll be an opening, be in line with an existing entrance door right now.
Okay, so the question then becomes that where that staircase terminates, which I would imagine is going to terminate further forward of the deck itself of seven feet?
Yes.
That staircase ending is then going to leave you a front yard of eight and three?
Yes.
Okay.
So just for clarity, when this was approved last January, the miscalculation was that the variance did not take into account the extra space for that stairway.
I'm not sure what the variance, what the error was there, what, how much yards was required there, but I have the plans here approved from the city. If I take a look at it, they have it as 11 feet point seven nine inches, but that's to, that was to the deck. After measuring on the plan, the staircase was four feet, so then that left us with seven feet and three quarters of inch. Now I'll be leaving, I'll be, with these new plans, I'll be adding about six inches, seven inches.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. So this was a variance that was approved for the one deck?
Yes.
Was it the bottom, not the top, it was the bottom?
Yeah.
The funny part is, though, with the code, right, so like the front yard setback, if you grant somebody, let's say, a variance to bring out a deck five feet, that's actually five feet and it goes all the way up, so they don't need it, they didn't necessarily need a second variance, so just for your, you know, like if the homeowner wanted to build the second deck, once you got the first variance, as of right, technically, as long as you weren't coming out any further?
Yeah.
You could have done it anyway, but if the calculations were right. But now that you redid the plan, I mean, you did it the right way.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, just for the record, that the front yard setback goes all the way up to the...
That's what we had to do as well. I had asked the building department because that was the thing that we had asked the building department, they said we could come back even though we were maintaining the same, if anything, actually gaining more front yard.
Well, because once the variance is granted, if I recall, if you have nine months, you know, to get all the permits, all the applications in and begin construction, and if you don't do it within nine months, then technically, like, it just expires.
Yes.
So that's what happened here.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Okay. I have no further questions, any members of the board? Anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against this variance? I'll make a motion to grant.
We can't, we can't.
Oh, shit. I'm sorry about that.
So, the Nassau County Planning Commission, they have to, they have to give us the authority to vote on our cases, because even though we're a rural city, we're still under the county as a whole. We just didn't get the letter back from them yet, saying that we can. It shouldn't be an issue, and we should be able to vote next month, but being that you were here, we wanted to hear it, so you don't have to come back next month, but we will, the board will make a determination to approve.
Yeah, and we anticipate by next month they will have, you know, rendered a decision either way, you know? So you'll hear our vote next month.
No problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but, okay.
Case number 3478, application of Charles Franzini of 110 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach, New York. 9-105D side yard for a new side yard steps with outdoor shower at 110 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 74, lot 162, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, Mr. Apple.
This one we're not voting over. The applicant purchased his home about a year and a half ago. He moved from the west end. His family, his two children, he purchased his property for about 1.1 million. He's spent another couple hundred thousand dollars on renovating it so he could remain a resident of Long Beach, which is what we should seek as a board. This application we believe to be simple. We're looking for side yard setback variance, only because removing the stairs from the back that lead into the kitchen to the side. The sole purpose of that, the applicant, is because he wants to open up the pool in the yard. I asked them and we checked, and that will not need a variance, just P.S.E.N.G. sign-off. So that's really the reason he's doing it. There's a deck back there, we're going to remove that, and he really just wants the side yard stairs just to have access to the kitchen, although it looks like a side yard setback variance. The property's 100 feet deep. This is only about 16 feet worth of that being a setback. The house of Butts, to the east of it, it's to the west of the corner property. The corner property has privacy trees that go up, so you can't even see it. It's not going to obstruct any view of neighbors. Nobody's going to see him walking in and out of there. It's not going to create any issues. Like I said, it is ordered there with privacy trees. Certainly, good for the criteria, it's not going to be undesirable change of neighborhood. This is somebody who, like I said, upgraded his home, upgraded the size of his home. He has a young family. Land use property is thin as it is, it's tight. The yard is a luxury, it certainly is something that people seek to do and appreciate and feel would be great, but like I said, you have to move that staircase if you want to do it. It accesses his kitchen, so he has their sliding glass doors that go out, it's a split-level house, he can access the backyard, but he can't go outside and walk through without that stairway, so he does need to. It can't be achieved by any of the means. We all know that, like I said, the property size, the yard, the setbacks, the way they are in Long Beach, we're coming here for what we believe to be a reasonable request. We don't think it's substantial based on what we have put on the record. And certainly, once this is built, that his home is renovated, ultimately, his area is limited with his family, there's not going to be an adverse impact either mentally or in any conditions of the neighborhood. So again, we believe this to be a reasonable variance, and again, it's been done so he can maximize his property that he spent a lot of money to stay here with for his kids and enjoy. I believe she'd like to say, my client would like to say something important, but if you have any questions, we may all answer that first.
No, just to remind Mr. Apple, the board can't vote tonight, but if they're having any...
Yeah.
I do have one question. Did you hear anything from the neighbor as to this? Objections from the neighbors?
Not aware of it.
I guess, no? All right, thanks.
I mean, the neighbors are kind of, the neighbors are a corner property, and they're approaching a little bit too, but again, there's privacy trees there, so I don't even think they're going to...
Okay. I just asked if you heard.
Yeah, I, we have not.
Okay.
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm sorry?
Just your name and address for the record.
Charlie Franzini, 110 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York. Not much to add to what Mr. Apple said already, except I have a three-year-old and a one-and-a-half year-old, and God willing, more on the way, so we'd like to make the room in the backyard for a pool, and I have a great relationship with my neighbors. The sign's been out. No concerns from them. Privacy trees on my side of the yard that are at least eight, nine feet tall. There's a staircase in the back now. You can't step out onto, you can't see their yard. Moving over a few feet, yeah, with the intention of hopefully making the backyard that we can all enjoy and trying to do it the right way. Thank you.
I'm just curious, I have one question for you, Mr. Franzini. I'm just curious, it looks like a beautiful sunroom. Did you add that on the back of the house or that was there?
I did, that was, that was the pre-decent.
That's very nice. Do you have any leaks?
No.